I'm going to make this announcement. We're waiting on a attorney to get here, so we're going to start the meeting at 6:05. It's now 6:05. I'm going to call to order the Regional Planning Commission public hearing for Thursday, September the 4th. And as we always do, we're going to start with the pledge. I'll ask Mr. Servon if he'll lead us in the pledge. Well, welcome everybody back as we start our new year for the September month and through the winter months. We always have August off. So I hope everybody had a great summer. So I welcome all the commissioners back also. It's good to see most of them here. I'll now go down to you, Sarah, for the roll call and determination of quorum.
Mr. Peterman?
Present.
Mr. Servon?
Present.
Mrs. Karcher is absent. Mr. Galvry?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
So you have six present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, you also see in front of you the agenda for tonight's public hearing. If there's no corrections or additions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Then make the motion and Peter seconds it.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes.
Mr. Servon?
Yes.
Mr. Galvry?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
So you have six yes in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir. And I'll come right back to you for the introduction and public hearing instructions.
Thank you. This public hearing is being conducted for the purpose of giving the citizens of the county the opportunity to present testimony on the applications before the planning commission. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. All statements are to be made from the podium at the front of the room or via WebEx once recognized by the chair. All testimony given shall be sworn or affirmed. For the record, please give your name and address. Copies of any written statements or exhibits used during the hearing should be presented for identification and inclusion in the record. The record will remain open for two business days following the hearing. For each application before the commission, the chairman will introduce the application. Then the applicant or representative will be given fifteen minutes to present the application. Following that, those in favor of the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. Then those opposed to the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. When everyone has had an opportunity to give testimony, the hearing on the application will be closed. No decision will be made by the commission tonight. The commission will hold a public business meeting next Thursday, September 11th at 6:00 PM, at which time it will make a decision on the applications heard tonight. All information of record will be considered. A common vote of four members is required to make a decision. Anyone may attend the business meeting, but no new public testimony will be received. The public notice of this hearing was published on August 13th, 2025, in the Delaware State News. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. I don't know if this would have been a change to the agenda. I noticed in... Meeting. Was that supposed to be on for approval tonight?
No, that'll be for next.
Okay, that's understood then. So we'll go right into our public hearing. First application on our public hearing tonight is CZ-25-03. Application number is CZ-25-03, Susan D. and John C. Nichols, Jr. Present zoning is AR, agricultural residential, low-density residential. Proposed zoning is BG, general business highway commercial. Area and location is 6.29 acres located on the north side of Walnut Shade Road, approximately 890 feet west of South Dupont Highway. Is there someone here to represent the application? I need you to come to the podium, Mr. Nichols, and give us your name and address, and I will ask you a question.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is John Nichols, Jr. I'm located at 624 Bison Road, Dover.
Before you start, I'll have to ask you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
I've got my notes here on, obviously, the rezoning application, a CZ-25-03. Respectfully, the staff recommendation report is inconsistent and wrong in many respects. First, the character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent the zoning map should be changed. As the staff report recognizes, there have been four rezoning applications within the immediate vicinity of the subject property over the past forty years. Like my application requested a rezoning from AR to BG, moreover, there is an industrial zone property located immediately to the north of my subject property that touches that property. Second, the requested zoning classification is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As the Office of State Planning Coordination notes, the subject property is located in investment levels two and three according to the 2020 strategies of the state policies and spending and is inside the growth overlay zone for Kent County. This is an area where growth is anticipated in the near-term future. As the staff reports notes, the subject property is located within the Woodside Village area where neighborhood commercial uses like my business are encouraged. Third, transportation facilities, water and sewer, storm drain systems, and fire suppression facilities are adequate to serve the proposed use either in existence or readily available. The subject property located on Walnut Shade Road is very close proximity to a busy intersection on US Route 13, one of our major arterial roadways in Kent County. Public sewer is neither necessary nor required for my intended use of the property. Water and fire suppression facilities are already in place. Critically, none of the agencies governing infrastructure requirements, the county's Department of Public Works, Kent Conservation District, DLDOT, or the Dover-Kent County MPO have any objection to the requested rezoning. Fourth, there is compatibility between the proposed use of the subject property and surrounding uses. As previously noted, there are a significant number of commercial use surrounding the subject property, and the proposed use, as my business, will in no way compromise the health, safety, or welfare of area residents. Indeed, I have the support of all of my neighbors. For all the foregoing reasons, I respectfully request your favorable consideration and approval. I also have two letters of neighbors, one across the street, one adjoining, that have been there since I bought the other property in 2006, in favor of my application.
All right, thank you, sir. And I'll stay right there. I'll ask the commissioners. Mr. Davis?
I don't really have a question. I just want to put it on the record. I think when you go west into the corporate limits of Woodside, there is a business on the corner, Woodside, Woodside Mini Stores Business and two other businesses. In addition to north of the strip mall, that's two doors over from your proposed zoning that you're in here for, is Dollar General. So the area, because I live down that area, so I know what goes on. I think what you're doing, I've noticed your business, you keep it nice, very professional, but the general business has moved in that area. So I just want to... Is that accurate in your opinion?
Yes, sir, it is, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Servon?
Yes, I have a quick question, just to clarify. Your other property is the one on the direct corner to the lower left?
No, sir. My property would be to the east of that, the property right now for the rezoning. That's the current property that I own.
All right, thank you.
Is that all? Any other commissioners? Thanks again for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Who do I give these to?
Give them to... Is there anyone else here in favor of this application? Would like to speak? Anyone else here in favor of this application? Third and final call, is anyone else here in favor of your application? I'll go to the negative side. Is there anyone opposed to this application? Anyone opposed to this application? Anyone opposed? Having said it three times, we will... Have we had anybody on the phone?
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Let the minister show that the attorney is now here, and we can get all of our legal issues taken care of.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for being late. Group one got me today.
Gets a lot of people every day. Next on our agenda tonight is our application number two, LC-25-15, CCZ-25-03, Susan D... Excuse me, I'm one. Let me go on to the next one. I had a month off, so I'm not very sharp tonight. Next one on the agenda tonight is CZ-25-19. Application number is CZ-25-04, George A. and Amy A. Lewis. Present zoning is BG, highway commercial. Proposed zoning is AR, agricultural residential, low-density. The area and location is 1.884 acres located on the east side of Iron Mine Road, approximately 880 feet north of Sandtown Road, west of Felton. Is there someone here to present this application? Someone here to present this application? You come up, and the attorney will either swear or affirm you after you give us your name and address.
Can you give your name?
Charlie Albany's, my personal address, 1295 BB Road in Harrington.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth?
Yes.
Ma'am, keep the microphone as close as you can. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Thank you. I know you're nervous, but you do great.
I'm kind of a stand-in, actually. I kind of got this at the last minute, so...
Well, you'll do fine. You'll do fine.
All I know about this property is the homeowners bought it for cash a few years ago, and their realtor did not share with them that they would have problems reselling the house if they wanted to. And so they bought the property. They did a lot of fixing it up. They decided to retire and move south, which they have tried. They liked it. They would like to sell their house, but now they can't sell it for anybody to get a mortgage because it is owned commercial. There used to be a glass, people who made something with glass, glass products of some sort. So they took it from a resident AR zoning to a commercial zoning, and now they are asking that you put it back to AR so they can get a mortgage. So somebody buying can get a mortgage.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, we thank you for your presentation.
It was very easy. Thank you very much.
You did great. Is there anyone else here in favor of this application would like to speak? Anyone else here in favor? Third and final call, anyone else here in favor? Is anyone opposed to this application would like to speak? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed?
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. Still no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and we'll be taking this application up next week. Now we go to our third public hearing application. Plan number and title is SL-25-03, Gerald Ridge, located on the north side of Fire Tower Road, 900 feet west of Turkey Point Road, south of Viola. Owner applicant is Behram Holdings LLC, care of Mohammed... Excuse me on the last name, Ikwa. Ikwa, very good. Thanks for the help. 77 Case Ridge Road, Dover, Delaware, 19901. Engineer is Morris and Ritchie Associates, 111 Ruttmar Drive, Newark, Delaware, 19711. Present zoning is AR, agricultural residential. Levy Court District is the fifth, Mr. Sweeney. School District is Lake Forest. Fire District is Felton Station 48. Size of site is 57.85 acres, plus or minus. They're actually building eighty-five single-family lots. There is wetlands in the area of 3.86 acres. Total areas within woodlands is 22.88. Relation to the growth zone is inside. Streets will be public. Water is Tidewater Utilities. Sewer is Kent County Sewer. Is there someone here to represent this application? We could have your name and address, and you could be sworn or affirmed.
Sure. Charlie Barnett with Morris and Ritchie Associates, 111 Ruth R. Drive, Newark, Delaware.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. As already stated, here to present the project before you of Gerald Ridge. Hit many of the highlights already. It's about a fifty-seven acre parcel that is currently zoned AR in the growth zone. On behalf of both the landowner and developer, same entity, Behram Holdings, here tonight to present this byright project to you folks. Eighty-five single-family detached lots are being proposed. Gives a density of 1.47 dwelling units per acre, which is well below the maximum allowed of 3.5. We are... Thank you. Just a couple of highlights here. We are proposing 1.2 acres of active open space, which is twice as much as the required amount. We are providing over thirty-three acres of passive open space, so over half of the property is going to be reserved as one kind of open space or another. And then the infrastructure, as we already talked about, will be public utilities. Projects located just out of Viola on Fire Tower Road, all of the surrounding properties are also zoned AR except for the two developments to the west of the property. Those are both RMH, and they are the Riverdale Estates and Countryside Mobile Estates Developments. To the immediate east of the property is a single residential lot. The property is bordered along the north side by Hudson Branch, which is a Blue Line Stream. Across that are several properties. One of the largest adjoining landowner is a proposed solar facility. It's already been approved, yet to be constructed, so looks like agricultural on the aerial imagery if you look at it, but it's already proposed to become a facility for that. And then a couple other lots that are being used for agricultural just north of the property. Here's an overall of the plan that will show some of the other highlights. As I talked about, it is Kent County Public Sewer. There is a sanitary pump station right about here where I've indicated on the plan, so we will extend gravity sewer up Fire Tower Road and into development from there. There's also very close to that an extension of Tidewater Utilities Water Main. We will extend that up Fire Tower Road and into the subdivision. Speaking of Tidewater, we have also...
Sir, can you keep the mic up a little closer? We're kind of losing you a little bit.
I apologize. I'm going back and forth, sorry. In this area here, we have indicated an area for Tidewater to put a holding tank. We do not know the specifics of that right now. It is not a requirement for the subdivision to have water, but the owner does have an agreement with Tidewater that they can put a water holding tank there for future use if they so want to. So that's why you see that area kind of set back away from the lots. Hopefully, everything goes through. You'll be getting a conditional use application by Tidewater Utilities when that time comes, but that is not part of this here right now. The internal streets will be all dedicated to DLDOT, so they will be public streets. They will be designed, reviewed, and approved by DLDOT, so they will meet all of the state standards for accessibility, fire and emergency apparatus. They will all have sidewalks on both sides of the streets. They will have ADA compliant crosswalks at all the intersections. We will also be providing a shared use path, which is a wider walking path along the north side of Fire Tower Road, and we will be tying in the internal street sidewalks in several locations. We're also planning to propose a sidewalk that meanders from this area along the perimeter. Nice little kind of nature walking trail that you can be up against the woods. It will tie in at several locations to the internal street sidewalks so that there's plenty of accessibility for all the residents in the subdivision.
Can I ask if you agree with all staff comments?
We agree with all the requirements in the staff's pack. There are three recommendations that the staff has in there. We do not agree with all three of those. Be glad to speak at those at this time if you'd like. Two of those have to revolve around putting together a light district, and we do not have issues with that and would gladly be open to that if that's what the planning commission would like. There is a recommendation in there to both move the entrance location to the subdivision as well as provide a secondary entrance location. We are not in favor of doing that, and a couple reasons for that being it is our experience with DLDOT that they insist on a single access point as much as possible for projects, especially ones like this. This is very similar to a project that we're currently getting approved through DLDOT right now in Georgetown where we're off of a local road. That project has 239 dwelling units in it, and DLDOT is insisting that we are only allowed to have one access point for that project. We have, very similar to this, we have cul-de-sacs that are not too far off the road. We propose to have emergency access routes that wouldn't be fully used all the time, but it would have gravel underlayment under the grass that an emergency vehicle could use if something were to happen, there'd be something catastrophic at the entrance, and DLDOT has completely put a kibosh on being able to do that in the future and will not allow us to do that at any of the points we had proposed. So I do believe that that will not be something that DLDOT would entertain. This entrance here on the far west side of the property, I think there... I either read it wrong, or there might be a type... it wrong or, or there might be a typographical error in this recommendation. I think it said it wanted a second one on the east side of the, of the power lines, but I, I think it meant west. But this entrance here is very close to these two entrances. There are actually two entrances right here, one for Riverdale Estates and one for Countryside Estates. It is way too close for Del Dot to allow another entrance to be. Due to this road and the speed, they require entrances, you know, decision points they call them, to be at a certain pace so that you don't have confusion as you're driving down a road, or it's too hard to pull out because there's other people trying to pull out at the same time. So I think that would be difficult. So once you take that away and you look at only having one entrance, as Del Dot, I, I would imagine will be all but requiring. I think the entrance we're providing is centrally located. It allows people on both sides of that power line right away to easily get to their homes and for emergency services and things like that. We have located two potential bus stop locations on the plan, one here and one here, also where we have cluster mailbox being proposed and parking spaces. We sent the preliminary plan to the school district and told them of where we wanted to do this, and we got a positive response from them in the email, and we provided that to planning staff as well, so they agree with those locations as well.
Just to be clear on the recommendations, your challenge is to recommendation number one, but you do not have any objection to recommendations two and three relating to the street light?
That's correct. Thank you. We will most likely be making, well, we will be making a slight change to the plan we gave before you after seeing the public notice. We were approached by the landowner to the east. Lovely woman Nancy Baker called us up and, and talked. She did have some concerns with how close their house is to the property line and their pool and some other things, so we took a look at the plans after talking with her on the phone, and these two lots, well, you can see on this plan that there is a, a row of trees here that give a good buffer between the two properties, but those trees end right about where that cursor is showing. So we have two proposed lots, and they're much deeper than they have to be to meet code requirements and for the houses that the developer plans to build. So we did tell her that we would pull those back lot lines in by 20 feet and create an open space strip that connects to the open space that runs along Fire Tower Road, and we would provide a, a privacy fence along that, that's what she had requested. So a slight modification to the plan, but just a little addition of open space there to accommodate our neighbors. We include two waiver requests in our proposal. Both of those did receive recommendation as for approval by the planning department, but if you wanted to run through those, I can real quickly. One is for street linkages. By code, I guess technically we should be providing street linkages to the properties to the north with Hudson Branch there, a significant riparian buffer, wetlands, floodplains, all these natural resources. It just didn't really seem to make sense, especially now that one is not going to be used for residential use, it's a proposed solar facility. And like I said, so we've requested that waiver, hope you grant it as well. The second waiver requested was needing to buffer against agricultural uses. Again, the only space we don't have a buffer is against the future solar facility, but in Morsel, the reason we don't have a buffer there is because it's in Del Marva Power and Lights overhead power line easement. So we would be unable to plant trees right there, so we're asking for that waiver in that area alone. That's the gist of my original presentation, be glad to answer a question.
Yes, I got a couple of questions. Being an active member of the Felton Community Fire Company, the chiefs had looked at this, and we always have a problem when there's only one way in and one way out.
Okay.
Especially if we had a house fire back on the northwest side, and at the same time we had a wreck in the main entrance, we would not have access to be able to get to those situations, especially, you know, with the way things go today, you never say never.
Okay.
So looking at that, and you talked about the cul-de-sac, the far western, about being close to other entrances, we'd certainly like you to see if that couldn't happen. If nothing else, a stabilized access out from that cul-de-sac to the roadway and actually marked off as a, you know, emergency access, only have an aux box on it or something like that.
I, I like that idea, I really do. I would be glad to, I would be glad to commit that we would try to do that, that location. I, I just cannot guarantee you that Del Dot will approve it. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, it's their say.
Well, we wanna go on record as saying what we say. But the other thing is, I, I did survey work for a long, many years of my life, and we always had very hard time going through DP and L right of ways, whether it be driveways, roadways and all like that. Do you already have clearance with Del Marva Power that you can build this road?
We don't have communications with them specifically for that. However, we did provide copies of the easement agreement with Del Marva, and it states that there is no complications for doing that. They only, as far as, I'm not the attorney, I'm not a lawyer, so I provided the documents, and you're willing, more than willing to review those, but my understanding, how it was explained to me, was that the, the encumbrance to the landowner is they can't build an actual structure, a house, inside that easement. But I believe surface improvements are allowed by those easements.
Yeah, we were actually two years getting a driveway, just a driveway across, back in, off of South Bowers Beach Road back where they had the major power lines.
Okay.
And they were very complicated because a lot of times it wouldn't even answer your calls.
Okay.
And can you guarantee us, or whatever it is, that you have the permission or supply to serve? Do you have that, Sarah?
It's, we did receive communication from DP and L late yesterday-
Okay.
-that they do have, they've got a permit process to be able to-
Sure.
Surface across-
We've done that in the past, yep.
So I would just suggest that the permit for DP and L be approved prior to final plan approval if we can pull that off.
I, I would imagine we would need that for the record plan.
Yeah, 'cause it could end up being two separate developments if you have to open it without a, without a entrance and you can't go across.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's fair. I don't think that will be the case. Again, I'm not the lawyer, I'm just regurgitating what I was told, but I, I, I think, I think it's an acceptable response to make sure we have that worked out before record plan.
Yeah, and make sure you do, and you have till the end of what, Tuesday?
No, he wouldn't have the permit by then. He would need preliminary plan approval, then he could go to permitting with DP and L.
I mean, 'cause that could be a very, very troubling point.
And he's got two years to get to record plan.
Again, again, the, the lawyer for the project, who unfortunately is not here tonight, but he was very confident that that would not be an issue, given the-
Good luck with DP and L, especially communicating.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners have anything? Mr. Mills?
Yes, I have one. We put safety first on everything, and Del Dot, we go by what they want done in these developments, go by what soil conservation wants, we go, get everything done except one thing. How are these kids gonna get loaded on the bus? I'm a bus contractor. I know all about these developments and how we're picking these kids up, and right now, the only way these kids can get picked up is out there on Sinclair Road and Fire Tower Route. I don't care what Lake Forest said, what they want, but I'm telling you, it's not a safe place. How you gonna get a bus in there? Go back to that back part where you pointed out, there gonna be a bus stop.
Those, those streets are, will be accessible-
We're not talking about what the streets are. We're talking about a bus going in, off that road and picking up these kids and doing it in a safe fashion. And what a safe fashion is, is you going on Sinclair Road, I lost my computer. Put it at the end of, now I can't see it. Sinclair Road, and that where it joins up with that Milton Road. A circle should be put right there in order for the buses to go in and circle around and pick up all those kids, and those cars have room to stop and not out on Fire Tower Road.
All I can tell you, sir, is that we, we, we gave the plans to the school district. We talked to the student services supervisor, he reviewed the plans. He was appreciative of the two bus stop locations that we put on there-
Well, he don't know what he's talking about.
-and said that would be acceptable for him. I, yeah, I-
Not gonna prove anything, can't consider these kids first to get them picked up in a safe manner, and I know, because I'm going in developments right now, they've got, the dogwood matters down in Milford, got a great large circle, we just go right in, circle right around and come right back out on the route. That can be done in here. The trouble is, you wanna jam up every house there is you can on these properties.
So, forgive me, if you could, what exactly is your proposal for that to happen?
If I could see it on this computer, I've lost it here. I can't see it up there, but on the Sinclair, on the road that's going off of Fire Tower Road-
What we-
Yeah, come down to the Fire Tower Road. When Fire Tower Road, off Fire Tower Road, you're going in on, what's that road name there? Sinclair?
Yeah.
Sinclair, right there, where it intersects. There should be a great big circle put there in order for that, them buses to go in there and just circle around and come back out.
There's, there's two bus stops you have on there. Is that for Dart buses and others, or is that for specifically?
That's for anything. I mean, we checked it with the school district, but they could be used for anything. Here, if I, if I can, while you're looking for that, I do have a, I no longer have control. I was gonna go to the next slide, I think I have an enlargement. Okay? There we go. So here is the, here's an enlargement of the one active open space where we have a hot lot. As you can see, this is also providing some pull-off parking spaces as well as the cluster mailboxes, and we are also proposing for that to be a bus-
That's on Dickerson, correct?
I beg your pardon?
That's on Dickerson Court.
Uh, yes, yes. So that gives a place for parents to park their cars, get off of the street, wait for the bus to show up, kids to get on the bus, it's a good centralized location.
Where is that on the map? I can't figure that out.
Uh, can I go back with this? I would've thought that would be the back button. Perfect, thank you. So the one I just showed you was right here.
Way down there. I mean, you gotta go in, how they gonna go around where? That circle?
Well, the school bus would come in this way, and they would make a loop, and they would stop, and then they would come up here, and there's the second bus stop, and they would make a loop-
No, no, that's, no, that's not, no, it don't work that way, no. Delaware will not allow those buses to go in there and, and do just what you're saying. Sure you on that.
Do you have a letter from the school district?
I do, I have an email, and I provided that to planning staff when we got it. I can circulate it again.
Maybe we could have that forwarded to us next week, Sarah?
Do you have that one, Sarah? Sorry, I think you, I think it was-
I believe we do have it. It should be in your packet, but we'll double-check it and make sure you have it for next week.
What you got, Mr. Mills?
That's all, thank you.
Anybody else, any other commissioner? Mr. Garvery, anybody? Down here, anybody? Thank you, sir, for your presentation and for your understanding and your patience with us.
Appreciate it, thank you all. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this development of Gerald Ridge? Anyone else here in favor of this development? Come to the mic. Third and final call. Anyone else here in favor? Is there anyone opposed to this development? Anyone opposed to this development? Third and final call, anyone opposed? If not, we'll be taking this up next week at our business meeting. Thank, oh yeah, forgot the phones.
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to make comments in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we'll be taking this up next week. Our next application is number four. Plan number and title is SL-25-04 Ellery Farm, located on the northeast corner of South Dupont Boulevard and Twin Willers Road southeast of Smyrna. Owner and applicant is Patricia E. Gibbs, Dawn R. Ellery, Gwen D. Renadus, and Robin A. Silverman of 3431 South Dupont Boulevard, Smyrna. Engineer is Morris &amp; Ritchie Associates, 111 Ruth R. Drive, Newark, Delaware. Present zoning district is RM. Levy Court District is the first, Ms. Maston. School District is Smyrna. Fire District is Citizens House Station 44. Size of site is 81.978 plus or minus eight. It looks like the density will be 4.32 units per acre. The streets are public. The water is artesian water. The sewer is Kent County Sewer. Is there someone here to represent this application? Please give us your name and address, unless you're an attorney.
My name is Jonathan Content, on behalf of K. Huvnanian Homes, 2499 South Dupont Boulevard, Suite G, Smyrna, Delaware.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, sir. I did bring a printed-out copy of what will be up here. Would you guys like me to pass it out beforehand?
So when you get back to the mic, go ahead with your presentation.
I do have a presentation which we're gonna present, or I'm going to present. I just wanna thank you first for the opportunity to bring another project to Kent County, working with the commission on the rezoning, which we did last year, as well as the levy court and the planning staff has brought us here tonight, and we're, we're ready to move forward with preliminary plan. A lot of the information that you've mentioned about the site, I won't go over again just to save time for everybody, but I did want to show its proximity to major travel routes, which would be Route 13 to the west, Route 1 to the east. And then this is a screen capture out of the county's comprehensive plan, just to show that we are within the growth zone. And then this just shows the property. We did get a wetland delineation done, and it was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers just to show you where the wetlands are on site, as well as the Blue Line stream that's on site. And then since we were here last, we have, K. Huvnanian has closed on the property. I do have our closing attorney here, as well as the attorney who represents three out of the four sellers, so if there are any questions about any proceedings up to this point, they can come up after we go through the presentation, and you guys can ask them any of the questions that you have at that point. So approvals to date. We got rezoning, and then we moved on from there. We created the sewer district as required as a part of the preliminary plan application, and that was approved earlier this year, actually right before the summer. And we do have an approved TIS, which I believe is attached to your packet. Here's our jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps of Engineers. So we'll move on to our proposed plan. We are proposing in this area, and we, we rezoned it for what the county calls high-density residential. We are not proposing to use all 10 units per acre that we are allowed under that zoning. We are, as you read off, using a little over four and a third units per acre. We're looking at doing 354 townhome units in this area. And I won't read this, but just to remind everybody, the governor has acknowledged that we have an issue with housing, with affordable housing, if with, for first-time homebuyer housing. Kent County certainly not exempt from that problem. And so in conversations with some levy court commissioners, as well as others up and down the state, one of the things they ask us is how can we bring the cost of housing down? And the answer is higher density. And that's exactly what executive order number four from the governor discusses, and that's what we've talked about with a lot of other planning commissions throughout the state, municipal, county level. This is what a lot of people are moving towards because it makes the homes more affordable when you can fit more units in to spread some of those land development costs across more lots. So here's a site plan, which I believe you guys have a copy of. This is the rendered site plan, and it does show pretty much any of those areas that you see green trees are areas that are wetland or stream, and we will not be impacting those. Our plan does not have any impacts, so there will be no wetland permit required on this design. And then I wanted to go into some of the product that we'll be building, and you can actually see these down in Milford. actually see these down in Milford, just south of the hospital, the Windward Grove community that's there. We're building these right now. This is what our proposed product is. Of course, by the time we get to all approvals and land development is to the point where we can actually start constructing, our product may be different at that time. We'll probably, that's probably about 18 to 24 months from now. But this is an example of a 20-foot town home product that we're currently building in the city of Milford. And I wanted to show what our typical building envelope will look like, and this is important as we get further into the presentation. We talked about some of the staff's recommendations, but I also wanted to show the offsets that, or the distance that we'll be using for the driveways. We intend that people will be able to park a car in the driveway, as well as park a car in their garage. And then our plan, which we'll go over after this, our plan does include some overflow For the first staff recommendation that I wanted to come to, it was recommendation number two. The staff recommended a crosswalk for Twin Willows. We have no problem with that, but of course, that is a Del Dot road, so any striping or signage or anything that happens on there will be up to Del Dot. We can bring that up with them, and if they have no objection to it, we can certainly put that in. But just wanted to remind the commission that that, the jurisdiction for what happens with striping on Del Dot roads lies with Del Dot. The internal streets will have two different right-of-ways. You can see a typical right-of-way here, 50-foot and 60-foot, and of course, all of these streets are public. They'll all be Del Dot streets. And then this is the parking diagram that I wanted to talk about. All of those, and it might be a little bit difficult to see, but all of those highlighted magenta-colored areas are off-lot additional overflow parking. One of the issues that we typically see in town home communities is that if you do not have overflow parking like this, there's not enough parking. So in addition to the garage that they'll have, the driveway that they'll have, we do have overflow spots, and as you can see, the required amount of parking is 708 per county code, but we're intending to supply 847 throughout the community. And that brings us to staff recommendation number four. There was a request that in this, in this center section, that we put in alleys, and what we've found through all of our communities is that none of our buyers want alleys. Particularly on town homes, your lots are not as deep. If you put an alley in the back and you put your driveway in the back, you now have no backyard. And most people would prefer to have a backyard to a front yard. The other thing that we, that I wanted to point out is that in this, the county's code for streets, one of the design criteria, not necessarily criteria, but the goals or objectives, is to reduce the amount of impervious coverage. If we put alleys in here, and I did not have an opportunity to mock this up to get exact square footage, but I did measure roughly where the alleys would need to go, we would add over 42,000 square feet of impermeable surface to the project, which none of us want to do. That will impact whether or not you can infiltrate. It will certainly impact the cost of the community because now we're adding significantly more asphalt, sub base, and all of that. So as we start, as we talk about this trying to be a first-time homebuyer community, we just keep adding cost when we add those features to it. And like I said, our buyers don't want alleys. They don't want rear-loaded units. And if we do put alleys in, we'll have to continue to reduce the number of lots so that we actually have a place for those alleys to outlet to the public streets. And when we first, when we drew our first iteration of this plan, I think we were somewhere around 332 lots, and the county said, can you get any more in? And so we went back, we looked at the spacing between buildings that the county code requires, and we were able to get more units into this plan, so we're at 354, but as you could see previously, far shy of what we're allowed per unit for this zoning. So as far as that recommendation goes, we are not in favor of doing that, and I ask kindly that you would not recommend that as something or make that a condition of our approval. And moving on, should have highlighted it in a different color than blue, although it looks a lot better up there on that screen than it does down here. We do have a lot of open space. We have a good amount of active open space. If you look at the blue line around, that is our proposed walking path, as long as the multimodal path that will run across the front that Del Dot's going to require us to put in. All of it connects. The green area, we're going to do sidewalks on both sides of the street, so that will be all over. There's going to be a lot of interconnectivity for pedestrian traffic. And so, planning staff, their number one recommendation, as we look at this, because this was a good place to show it, that right there is the pump station, the proposed pump station. That's what works for gravity for this site, and the first recommendation was a landscape buffer around that. We're good. We can do that. That is not a problem. We prefer not to see them also. So for staff recommendation number one, we can do that. Staff recommendation number five, and actually I'll jump back quite a bit here. Staff recommendation number five was to sub parcel or subdivide this portion to the north and remove it from the property. And that presents a couple of challenges for the future, and that would be this section right here. First of all, there's a blue line stream there, so if you're going, it would not be advisable to try to build a road across that to connect it to any use. If we did subdivide that parcel and make it a separate parcel, it's now landlocked and there's no way to get to it, and there's no, there isn't necessarily a good use for that area. A decent amount of it is wetland and the open field area is overgrown. And our proposal is to leave it a part of the community, leave it alone, not develop it, and just let it to continue grow as wetland and new forestation.
Do you know approximately how big those are?
Um, yes. It's about 15 acres, that portion up there.
Thank you.
Yep. So we do not want to do that. Like jumping back to county code, if you look at chapter 187 where it talks about forestation and woodland preservation, that's a prime candidate to just leave alone and not touch. It also provides a nice buffer, not necessarily for us, but for the mobile home park that's to the north of us. That whole area provides a buffer from the noise that you would hear from Route 1, and certainly if that were ever to be developed, that buffer would go away. Jumping back into our presentation, we have designed a mostly centralized amenity center that sits right in the center of the site. You can see it on the plans that you have there. Right now, we're proposing a sports field on the northern side, two tot lots, as you can see there, the idea is that we would separate it ages two through five and then five through 12, which is a typical division line for the manufacturers of this equipment. A gazebo, and then the dog park would actually be split, and so you can see a faint line down the center there where you would have a small and a large dog park, one on each side. So we put all this right in the middle of the community and thought that would be a great idea, and it would work out roughly equal distance to everybody else. And Mr. Mills, this one was for you. We talked to Smyrna School District and we said, hey, look, we've got a plan for you. Our idea is that you would come in off of 13, come over Twin Willows, drive in. This central location is right in the middle of the community. Drive around, there's a pickup here, plenty of parking since a lot of parents like to park and sit with their kids in the car before they get on the bus, which as we know from other subdivisions means people sit at the entrance, which does not work out very well. So the idea was that we would use this area and then they can just drive out and continue northbound on 13, which in that area is a divided highway, no crossover, so they're going to have to come out and go north anyways. And so we sent that to the school district. Here's a copy of their email. It did take a little, it took several months. At some point in reaching out to them, they switched transportation supervisors and didn't tell anybody, didn't pass anything on, but we finally got in touch with them on July 22nd. Not only did she send this email back to me after I attached a copy of this plan, which you see right there, but then she called me, we talked through it, and she said that's one of the best plans that they've had, because most of the time, they're left with subdivisions built the way that they're built, and then they figure out how it works afterwards. I do want to note, though, that the county staff recommended on number three, recommendation number three, so initially, we thought that this would be a one-way street so that there wouldn't be the possibility of opposing traffic during pickup. County staff has recommended that we make that a two-way street, and the biggest reason for doing that is if you look at the site here, if that's a one-way street going out, then when people come in, they're going to have to drive around the loop and do that. And they thought that it would be better to have two-way street there so that people could come in from either entrance and get right to the back instead of having to drive around that loop. I'll leave that up to you guys. If you want us to do two-way street, it's easy to change. If you want us to leave it as a one-way headed west, then we can leave it at that.
Mr. Mills, why he's on that, would you like to comment on what he just said about the buses?
I would like to say, congratulate you and God bless you for putting these kids first. Without an ordinance in our code that says you have to do it.
Right.
I thank you very much for it because that's exactly what we need in every development, and if a developer can't decide to put one of these in to accommodate these kids, how they're getting on and off these buses, they don't need a developer.
Sarah, you made a comment, Sarah, about being a two-way street instead of a one-way street, and I can understand people having to go the extra thousand feet around to get to wherever their house is. Would you like to expand on why you said that?
Honestly, just because it seems more intuitive to the people who live in the community. I, so the staff made the suggestion. I think I'm with Jonathan, whatever the planning commission prefers.
The only consideration, and maybe instead of making this conditional, you can tell us what you want us to do, but the only thing that, and M.R.A.'s our engineer, I think Charlie is right back here, the only concern that he has is before we would commit to changing it to two-way, is if you look at this, this street is not straight across. It angles up just a little bit, and his only concern is whether or not we can make the radius there for connecting. If Del Dot says we're good, then it's not a problem. If they say we're not good, then we would not be able to comply with that. But I'll leave, if you want us to pursue a two-way, just let us know and we'll do it.
Would that street be the same as the other widths in the development, or would it be like the main entrance where it comes in and it's wide?
So if you, let me back up a little bit and see if we have a better plan. If you look at this right now, this main street coming in is a 60-foot right-of-way, and then it narrows down to a 50 around that loop. We could make that 60 all the way across.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Let me write that down.
I assume all the commissioners are in agreement with the two-way street being 60-foot wide? Very good. Mr. Peterman?
Yeah. I want to comment to you on that bus stop too, for picking up the kids.
Thank you.
You're one of very few, if not the one, that does that, or did that, or suggested that. Thank you. That's been a real thorn in the flesh here.
Thank you. I have heard it before, and we're very good at learning, and not just from planning commissions, but we're in these communities for several years as we're building them out, and when people see us, they recognize who our team is on-site, and they do not hesitate to tell us what's working and what's not working, and we try to take that feedback and incorporate that into our next plan to see if we can make it better. And this design of having a central amenity with a loop around for a bus, this isn't the first time we've done it, and certainly unless there's some site constraint why we can't do it, it won't be the last.
While you're on the center of the development, you talked about the sports field and the two dog parks. Who maintained?
Yeah, this will all be maintained, all open space will be maintained by a homeowners association.
The sports field would be like a multi-use for whatever they decide to do with it.
Yeah, it will be whatever they want to use it for. I think when we were going back and forth with county staff, they wanted to see some more definitive use for it, so our plan, I believe, includes soccer goals, one on each end, but it could be used for whatever, whatever they wanted to use it for.
Thank you. You've been prepared for tonight, haven't you?
I spent a long time coming. So then we'll move on to the waivers. So there are two waivers. The first one is from street linkages, and the big reason, as the staff pointed out in their plan, is that, and I turned on the wetland layer here, so you can see there's a wetland pocket right there, there's a blue line stream that runs through it, but to the north where that pump station is for the mobile home park, they do have a street stub. Of course, Kent County Code says if there's an existing street stub, you've got to connect to it. If there isn't one every so many feet, you got to butt one. In this case, we asked for a waiver from that so that we wouldn't have to disturb the wetlands and build a bridge across that, and the county staff agreed with that. So here's a copy of their paragraph for approval. And then the second one is related to our walking, our nature trail around the stream and the wetland area. If you look, I highlighted in red the areas where we impede upon that stream buffer or the wetland buffer, and as the county staff pointed out, we are not proposing any of that goes into the wetland. It's just within that 25 or 100-foot buffer, and that represents about 1,100 feet of a nature path that we intend, again, as we showed on an earlier slide, that would connect all the way around and just be a nice scenic walk through that area. And fortunately, in this case, the staff also agreed with that, and they're recommending approval. So with that, I've got Bob Penza here with us, as well as Gary Dodge, if you guys have any questions about-
Before you finish, I'm going to open it up to the commissioners if they have any questions on you. Does any of the commissioners here have any questions for the design? Very good. You did your homework.
Thank you very much.
You got any, Peter?
One.
Mr. Garvery?
Actually, it's just a curiosity more than anything else, since we're talking about low-cost housing and increasing density to make that more affordable. I'm just curious as to what the average cost of these homes are.
They will have to be bid out at the time that we go to construction. We intend for these to be first-time homebuyers, not necessarily what is considered by Delaware Code affordable or by federal mortgage qualifications affordable, but I think right now, we're anticipating them to be somewhere in the low threes, which is consistent with other town homes in Kent County.
Thank you.
Are the homes going to be on concrete slab or foundation?
They'll be on concrete slab.
So in-
Yeah, there won't be a crawl space and there won't be a basement.
I noticed you have mostly six-house clusters and there's a couple fours and a couple sevens and all like that. I assume they're not sprinkled, but they'll be just individual alarm systems for each structure?
Yeah, so they won't be sprinkled unless, you know, as you probably know, we have to offer that as an option. If they elect to do that, then we'll put it in. We have a very low take rate on sprinkler systems throughout the state of Delaware, and primarily, especially in a first-time homebuying community, it adds a significant cost to the house, which a lot of people look at and they say, well, you know, if there's a fire and the sprinkler goes off, the house is destroyed anyways. All they really need is a decent smoke detector or CO detector to get them out of the house. And so we don't see a very high take rate on that, but of course, it will be offered.
Yeah, I can understand that because I know Mr. Davis used to be past chief in Federica Fire Company, and the sprinkler's been a hot topic over here for many a month now or many a year or so, and there's a hard thing to maintain it in the wintertime to make sure it doesn't freeze, unless they're dry standpipes.
So we had an issue a couple of years ago with one, a condo building that we did actually in Maryland, where after we turned it over, the homeowners, and a condo building separate from this, but the same scenario could arise, the homeowners, for whatever reason, elected through their condo association to not run the heat in the open space where the elevator was, which was also where the main feed went up through for the sprinkler system, and it broke on multiple floors, and we got to rebuild several condos. So there's a major reason to not use sprinklers, and our buyers don't typically go for it.
You have a great fire company up there anyway, Station 44 runs them.
Absolutely.
So once again, you've done your homework. I thank you. So you have somebody else that wants to talk a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Because you had your 15 minutes, you know. Does he have much he has to say?
Very little. Very brief.
I've told, I know he's an attorney, so I said, look, you get this much time.
Okay, we'll let him come up, and I assume you're not an attorney?
I am an attorney.
You are an attorney? All right. Okay.
Robert Penza, and I'm from Wilmington, Delaware, and I just wanted to make a few comments on the slide that you saw about the deed that was recently recorded transferring title.
I really think we're beyond that, because we're just looking at the site plan and all. What's the commissioners think about that? I don't need, I don't think we might have to, we don't have to get into that at all. I mean, that's already been settled and done like that, and there's no need to talk about anything else with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just didn't want there to be any confusion that could come up in the public comments.
I think if they have any comments, they would probably work directly with you if there's things still going on, because we're only here looking at the site plan and how it's going to be built and things like that. So I thank you for coming, though.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here in favor of this application? Anybody else here in favor and like to speak? At least it wasn't her phone, I guess. Give us your name and address, and you could be either sworn or affirmed.
Hi, my name is Gwen Rinaldi. My address is 1623 Jenkin, 1623 Madeira Avenue, Jenkentown, PA.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. I just want to say that I am here in favor and support of the developer's plan. I represent myself and my two sisters who own 50, who were the, we inherited 50% of this property, and we are excited about the opportunity that the builder is going to provide to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I liked your speech. Very nice. Anybody else here in favor of this application would like to speak? Last call for anybody else- Last call for anybody else in favor.
If there's anyone that's joining us online that would like to speak in favor of this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. Okay, Mr. Dion P., are you raising your hand to make a comment or not? If you'd like to make a comment, just, okay. You can unmute your line, give us your name and address, and be sworn in by our attorney, please.
Hello. My name is Dion Poslawka.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Ma'am, do you have an address?
Yes, I live at 188 Markham Court in Twin Willows.
Thank you very much.
So I have a couple of questions. So I live in Twin Willows, so my neighborhood's going to be affected, as well as the neighborhood next to us, which is Spring Meadows. And the biggest concern that I have is the traffic. There are tons of accidents that happen.
Are you in favor of this, or is this opposite?
I have questions. I ask, I ask, I'm asking questions. I didn't get an opportunity to ask questions.
Ma'am, if you would just... There's really, so it's usually for or against. And I think your questions would be best served if we did it in the opposition. So if you could just wait a minute and you'll have an opportunity, and you've already been sworn when we get to the next set. If that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to go over to the opposition now. And you've already been sworn and affirmed, so you're the first one in opposition to the development.
I've been fed.
It's not that I'm opposed or denied. I just have questions. Like, I don't, I'm not opposed or approving it. I just have questions.
Go ahead.
Just so, just so we're clear.
Now's the time to state those questions.
Okay. So the traffic in and out of this neighborhood, we are already combined with Spring Meadow, where we have a light on one side, we do not have a light on the other side. The light where we have, on the side where we have the light, the light going in and out on either side of the highway lasts a total of like four seconds. With the increased population that's supposed to be on the other side of Twin Willows Road, how is that going to be addressed?
Well, I believe you're talking about a Del Dot issue. None of the engineers or anybody like that is going to talk about light cycles or anything. So I would talk with your local representative or senator and get answers through that. Or actually, could they get any kind of answers like that, Sarah, from our planning department? That would be a Del Dot, wouldn't it?
We do have a traffic impact study for this project, and we'd be happy to discuss it with the...
So she could come in and actually talk it.
Or we can send it to her. It's contact us at planning.
Yeah, if you get ahold of the department and they can send you...
But why can't that be discussed here where you're actually looking for an approval on this project? That's my concern. Because you're going to approve.
It's quite lengthy, is what I'm saying.
Can I finish what I'm saying, please? But, but again, this is a public hearing where people are supposed to ask questions and have concerns brought forth about a development that's supposed to be done.
And that's what we're doing. We're giving you the answer. But the answer can't be all...
So if you approve the project, so if you approve the project, then it really doesn't matter what the concern is, what the traffic is. Because the same thing that happened here years ago, where there was constant accidents, and there's still constant accidents out here with the light, that's not going to be addressed until years down the road.
I really don't know how to answer that. Would you like to, the attorney like to try to? Because it's really addressed by the traffic study and what's in the area and how it would be assessed.
Yes, I'll attempt to address it, if I may. So as part of the development approval process for this particular type of development, there's what's called a traffic impact study, which is submitted to Del Dot. There's a lot of traffic figures about turning radius, things relating to intersections and the amount of traffic that's going to be generated, and what additional improvements need to be made for public safety as determined by Del Dot. That traffic impact study has been submitted and that has been approved. It's rather thick. I haven't seen this one, but it's a rather thick traffic impact study due to the number of units. So, so in other words, a lot of the, what at least the Del Dot experts have said is that they, that the proposed improvements or what needs to be done meet their standards as it stands right now.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, when you talked about a walking path, our neighborhood was also supposed to have a walking path before, after the neighborhood was completed, where there'd be a minimum requirement for the number of lots sold before the walking path was built. Because in our neighborhood, the walking path was supposed to be built when the neighborhood finished like 10, 12 years ago, and it just got completed.
Sarah, I think you can answer that.
Any improvements, any of the recreational improvements have to be completed by 80% completion?
And what happens, so then if it's not 80% complete? So like, in our instance, what happened was they started building another neighborhood, so they stopped building in our neighborhood, and that's why we didn't end up with the walking path.
What the county does...
And we also did not end up with a homeowners association because they didn't finish.
What the county does differently now is actually hold a bond for all of those improvements, which tends to be more of a motivator for a developer to finish. Or enables the county to finish if the developer doesn't.
We have a very good planning department. I think a lot of theirs could be answered if either you call them or get your emails back and forth, or come down here and let them explain it to you in person, instead of like this right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your questions. Is there anyone else online, Mark?
So Mr. Bowman, you may unmute your line and give us your name and address and be sworn in by our attorney. Mr. Bowman, did you want to make public comments in opposition or in favor of this application at this time? Mr. Bowman, go on one more time. Did you want to make comments in favor or in opposition to this application? We're unable to get your response. Seeing...
This is not working.
Okay, there we go. We got you now.
Yeah, I want to, against.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
It's not working. Dang it.
We can hear you. Mr. Attorney, why don't you go to, maybe that... Why don't you go and ask if, because we kind of started with the online. Why don't we go and see if we can get it working?
Okay, and maybe, Mark, you could tell Mr. Bowman if he wants to contact the planning department with these questions.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I think we have communication problems, so we're going to just go on with the meeting. So, okay, are we okay with that, Mr. Attorney?
Yep, we're okay with that. We tried. And the one thing, we have to ask if there's anybody here, because we kind of skipped that. If there's anybody in chambers that's opposed. Because we started with the online.
Okay, because we're going back to the opposed in the chambers. And you have questions about the plot development?
No, I don't have questions. I'm against.
Okay, well, give us your name and your address and keep it close.
Okay, my name is Aurora Gibbs. I live at 3431 South Dupont Boulevard, Smyrna, Delaware 19977.
Miss Gibbs, does the testimony, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, go right ahead with your opposition.
Okay. My parents are Patricia Ellery Gibbs and James Gibbs. My grandparents were Dorothy and Lawrence Ellery. I live on the Ellery Farm and have lived there continuously for 11 years now. I'm opposed to a lawyer whose name is not on the Ellery Farm deed placing an application singulately with the Kent County Planning Department for this farm. I'm against this type of development in Kent County. Also, in the 2020s, farming is rare. One in 50 kids grow up on a farm here in America. I am one of those children that grew up on a Delaware farm and an Alaskan homestead. My grandmother was a teacher and made an impact on our Delaware school system for decades in the state. A woman who had integrity, who helped run several legitimate businesses as a business owner and a farmer with her husband on the Ellery Farm. I am an accountant, and I am very thankful that I cannot measure the goodwill she provided Kent County and the state of Delaware. I also concur with everything my mother, Patricia Ellery Gibbs, the owner of Record, who just paid the property tax for 81.9 acres of the Ellery Farm for the 2025 and 2026 tax season. And she is going to be speaking next, and I concur with her. Thank you.
We thank you very much for your statements. Hold on. Hey, talk on your mic.
We've been here. We've been in this exact same spot, and I'm just wondering, from a legal point of view, I thought...
We're not going to take any kind of...
I thought we already had this resolved. Because we're going back to exactly where we were once before.
Nothing against you personally, am I correct? It's just, this legal parts have already been resolved. And so if you need to be opposition, then it's about the plans.
So, so, so they're allowed to speak in opposition, say whatever they want. But I think, you know, we've already been through the ownership issue. They're allowed to make a statement.
Can I just say, is this a lack of due process when it comes to eminent domain for private use on a private piece of property?
Your remedy is with the courts and not with the planning commission of Kent County.
Yes, but I'm saying is the owner of Record just paid the property tax for the 2025 and 2026 season.
Your remedy is not with the planning commission of Kent County.
Yes, but shouldn't she, Kent County Planning Commission have... You're under a duty to follow due process. And to have a developer say that they have taken ownership of property when they have not had the owner of Record sign any transfer for the deed.
With respect to due process, I will say that that concept, that concept is, in other words, that's mixing apples and oranges. The way this works is you're allowed to give public comment. You can give your public comment. But I'm not going to answer legal questions. We're not going to go there. Okay?
That's true, but they do not own the property. So I don't know why they're putting forward a plan for the property.
And what he's trying to say is that's all legal stuff, not dealing with the planning commission. We cannot answer that.
Thank you.
Please give us your name and address.
I am Patricia Ellery Gibbs, and I reside at 3431 South Dupont Boulevard, Smyrna, Delaware.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. I believe in the truth.
And keep the mic up to your mouth, please. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And you say, I can say what I believe. Thank you. Good evening. I did not die in December of 2003. I'm still very much alive, as you can attest to tonight. I have paid property taxes on 81.9 acres of the Ellery Farm for the 25-26 tax period. My father's name is Lawrence C. Ellery. He died in 2000. My brother's name is Lawrence C. Ellery Jr. He passed away in 2003. I was the primary owner with my father, Lawrence C. Ellery, who was the secondary owner after my mother, Dorothy Irwin Ellery, died. She was my first parent who died. There were mistakes on both of my parents' Delaware death certificates, which I corrected several years after my father died in 2000. My father, Lawrence C. Ellery, social security number was on my mother's 1996 Delaware death certificate, and my mother's social security number was on my father's Delaware death certificate. And yes, 3431 South Dupont Boulevard is a farm, as the Kent County property tax bill does reflect. I noted that in August as I paid it. As the owner of Record, I really don't believe that a 78-year-old woman is going to farm her property singulately. I also do not believe that three adult members of our family, out of a family of 15 or so adults, can alienate my individual right as the owner of Record of the Ellery Farm, as well as the rest of the adult family members' rights. Is Louis Pritzker's name on the Ellery Farm deed? No, it's not. Do you have access to this case with Delaware Chancery Court? No, you do not. The case is under an illegal guardianship, not under a trust. Pritzker was not known to my parents nor to me, until 2007, seven years after my last parents' death. My name is in all the paperwork my parents signed before their death. I acted as their legal representative and am acting as my representative of the Ellery Farm as primary owner and owner of Record. In that capacity, I'm working toward a clean deed. To attain this, a clean deed requires the help of the State of Delaware Department of Transportation. There needs to be follow-through by Del Dot, by the official memorializing of the eminent domain taking for Route 1 from the Ellery Farm. The Ellery Farm deed needs the Route 1 taking memorialized into it. In contrast, the earlier Route 13 eminent domain taking is memorialized into my Ellery Farm deed. Next, the rollback of fraudulent mortgages that have been placed on the Ellery Farm starting after my brother's death need to be removed from the Kent County deeds.
Ma'am, we...
Yes, you said that I could speak what I believe and I am.
Three minutes time limit, three-minute time limit, and you're allowed to...
What did you say, three minutes?
There's a three-minute time limit. There always has been.
What happened to the five?
Is it five? Did I make a mistake?
I was...
I made a mistake. I thought it was three. I will set it for two more minutes. I'll give you two more minutes.
Thank you very much. My three nieces were advised to sign a line of credit with Wilmington Trust. I never signed nor was notified about this or another or other, any other financial instruments on record in the county deeds. Finally, I'm not initiated nor filed any application to the Kent County Planning and zoning department, nor to or with Sarah Kiefer for the Kent County Regional Zoning Committee, nor Kent County Levy Court. I have signed no applications for the Ellery Farm, and I thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Does any commissioners have any questions? Mr. Garvery?
Yes.
Obviously, you're looking for remedy from this body, which cannot give you remedy for the problems you just outlined. But let me finish. But because of, we've been here before. This is almost the exact presentation that you and your daughter made the last time that we were here, with some, with some additional nuances, of course, but it's the same issue by and large. So my question to you is that, being the nature of this claim that you're making, I'm assuming that you have representation and that you're seeking remedy through the courts to resolve this matter, because you can't seem remedy here. So I'm just questioning, are you doing anything other than coming here and seeking remedy?
We're working on it.
And could you explain to me what working on it means?
We have been trying to present information, and we've been trying to work with Delaware State...
Ma'am, would you go up by the microphone?
I'm sorry. Moved over. We have been working with Del Dot and with the Attorney General's Office.
Okay, and they've taken this on and this is moving forward? Or is this something that you're working on but haven't gotten any?
And we've also contacted the FBI and the Federal Attorney's Office.
But is this a case that's actually moving forward, or are these just people that you're talking to? I'm just trying to get an understanding that you have representation, you have a lawyer, you're working through these different agencies, you're trying to come to some sort of remedy, or you're working on it in the sense that you've made calls to people, but you haven't actually have a case against anyone?
There's not been a case filed, if that is the question you're asking.
It is, actually. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here in opposition to this particular... Opposition to the plot? Give us your name and address, and you could be either sworn or affirmed.
My name is Rebecca Dale. I live in, I live in Spring Meadow at 144 Sorrel Circle, Smyrna, Delaware.
Do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. I have three-pronged concerns. One, traffic. Two, sewer. Three, schools. First, I'll start with traffic. The intersection at, at, coming out of Twin, between Twin Willows and Spring Meadows is, as she, and I, I don't want to hear about deferring to Del Dot, I don't want to hear about that. The concern is, people get hurt, they get injured or killed at that particular intersection. There have been, there, there is a number of real serious accidents that have been there. I know, because I live right on the highway there. I see some of those accidents. I understand there is no provision right now for an enter, or for a light at that intersection. Is that correct? And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't really get a chance to see the plot very well. Is there an arrangement for there to be a light and decent exit out of the development so that people can go south?
Ma'am, once again, these are Del Dot questions. We only deal with the land that's off the Del Dot right away, but you can talk to the planning commissioner, or talk about, you can get a copy of the TIS, which is a traffic study sent to you, and they can explain all those things. Am I right, Mr. Attorney?
Probably a better question for Sarah, but yes.
Sarah is her name? Sarah Kiefer? Okay. Because the concern that we have...
Hold up, ma'am, hold up. She's going to answer your question.
It, no, I mean, we can discuss traffic offline, as I thought what you were asking for, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I think, I think the, the community as a whole is interested in this issue, not just me. I talked at length to many people in our development, they have 247 homes there, and they're very interested, but I don't think very many, not many people showed up. So it's not because they're not interested, trust me. There, it's a lot going on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Perhaps you could have either the engineer or the representative provide you a summary real quick of what improvements are going to be completed.
Yeah, we could have him come back up to the microphone. As she gets done with her third, let her make her third one, and then he can address if there has to be something else.
Because that's very concerning. We're very concerned that people that want to go south to Dover will cut through Twin Willows, which is what I think the lady spoke, was trying to get at with her questions and concerns. And that's a very frequent thing, people will cut through, and we see it all the time on back roads.
He's going to try to explain a little bit of it in a minute.
In a minute? Okay. So there's, that was that. And then the sewer issue is concerning, because there's, in the center part of our development, not so much where I am, apparently, the sewer lines run from the town, past the correctional facility, and it carries all this sewage, and it winds up underneath where the center of our neighborhood is, so that the culverts, there are people that can't sit on their front porch, they can't be outside, it smells like sewage. They contacted whoever, and they came out to address it, and they said, now, when they addressed it, it smelled like sewage and fruit. So that was their, that was their solution. And it's still an ongoing problem. Now, the concern that was raised to me, when they knew I was coming here to talk, was that, is this just going to be more sewage, and it's just going to get to an extreme level? Because how many homes? How many children?
He addressed that by word. It's going to be a gravity fed to, to the southeast corner of the development. And it does all get transported, and it all, every bit of it goes down to Federica. That's where it's treated and assessed, but Public Works Department?
It's the, the project has been brought into the sewer district, and they did do, part of that is a technical feasibility study to ensure that there's capacity and to ultimately design how the system will work.
But if she has a question about her development, contact Public Works, and they can address that.
But we're concerned that the additional sewage coming from two doors down, so to speak, development-wise, is going to add to the flow that's coming down. My sewer area is up higher, but the people that are being affected the most, there's, because of the gravity fed, it's really bad over there.
Okay, I think that'll be another point he can address, and that's your third point?
And the third point is the schools. Coming from Virginia, 38 years of watch, development skyrocket in the Hampton Roads, Virginia area, and we have something called proffers, so that when a developer comes in, and they basically take farmland, which they do, and they, the increased capacity of the students in the school, which I worked in the school system for 30 years, that money goes to the school system, or to the Board of Supervisors, or whoever it is, and that helps to offset the increased number of students that go to those schools. What has been done about, what, what are the plans to help offset this potential crowding in the, in the schools? Because if, this isn't the only development we're talking about. I mean, I know y'all have more on the drawing board, so I'm just curious about those things. So those are my questions, and if y'all could address those.
Sarah's good address.
Sure. For, for school impacts, for more than a decade now, the county has had what we call a school surcharge. So there's a percentage on top of every building permit that we charge for each school district, and then a small percentage for polytech. And then that is transferred to the, the various school districts. So it's, it's not quite, it's not quite an impact fee, but it's a, it's a surcharge on top of a building permit fee.
Yeah, I noticed that, you know, we have a lot of school tax that we're paying now more than we have, and it would be nice if the, if the developers could take more of that responsibility and take less off the people, especially people who are retired living on, you know, permanent fixed incomes, so I think...
Well, we certainly thank you for your presentation.
Well, thank you.
Sarah, now that the engineer's coming up, he's going to address your three points. I assume he's kept a, he's kept good notes on the three points.
Thank you for letting me come up again. Jonathan Content with Kevanadian Homes. To start with the first point, I'll start on the, the traffic impact study. As pointed out, we did a traffic impact study because of it being 13 and the, the traffic that's already generated in that area. We moved a step beyond that and did a traffic signal justification study, which would be for a signal right here. And so when we look at the traffic impact study, we have to do traffic counts, and we analyze several different scenarios. The first scenario is, what does it look like right now? How much traffic is moving through here? What's the length of delay or the length of service, say, on Twin Willows, for people to make a left or a right turn? And then Del Dot classifies that based on the amount of time it takes into A, B, C, D, all the way down to failing. And so what, what they determine, the other scenarios that we have to do is what the projected build-out will be for the community with a number of building permits, not permits, but development plans that are approved several years into the future. Usually, they do five years into the future. And they determine whether or not it fails with existing approved plans. And the last case that they do is they throw us in the mix. And so they look at five years down the road, if this project gets approved and everything else gets built, what does that look like? And what they noted on the TIS, which we can get you a copy of, is that at this intersection, it will probably fail that level of service. And so Del Dot is already aware of this, because it's already, as you pointed out, a highly congested area on Route 13, and so that area will likely get a traffic signal. And of course, that will benefit both of you, or both this community as well as Twin Willows. I know that the light on the other end does not last very long. I drive through there pretty much every day, but having two stoplights should help to alleviate some of that traffic and, and give you guys another way to get out that is controlled. It is Route 13. There are only so many things that can be done. Initially, Del Dot's traffic engineer or their consultant, McCormick Taylor, recommended a roundabout, but they said, hey, we understand this is a highway, you can't build that here. So they're looking for us to do a traffic light at that signal. But all of that information, and, and Twin Willows, will have to improve along our frontage. So as you probably know from driving on it, the road is not very wide. There are shoulders only for a very short distance, and so we will have to improve that whole frontage along our property, as well as make contributions, not only to this intersection, but we've got a number of other intersections that Del Dot has already identified our issues, most of the ones to the south. And in fact, this one was originally included in Del Dot's Transportation Improvement District, but then they, for some reason, removed it. But they already understand that this whole area has an issue with traffic, and so they are putting together a plan with Kent County to improve the flow of traffic, basically from Smyrna all the way down to North Dover, and we will be paying a lot of money for each one of those improvements that have to be made. On sewer, Sarah touched on the, the technical feasibility study that had to be done by the Department of Public Works, as far as how sewer will flow here. And it sounded like there might be two issues. One, you mentioned sewer and talked about the smell of the existing system, but it, you also said when it rains, water floods?
No, I didn't say anything about raining.
Okay, okay, so just sewer, not storm sewer. We'll be building a pump, a pump station in the bottom right corner there, and it will connect into the forced main, the same forced main that I believe Twin Willows uses per the county staff's recommendation. As far as any issues within Twin Willows, as pointed out, you'd have to go through the county for that. Once we actually get to the, the point of engineering these plans, and we look at how much flow is going to be generated, what pressures it's going to be generated at, if there has to be an upsizing downstream, we'll be on the hook for paying for all of that. So if for some reason, there's an issue in Twin Willows, and it can't handle what we have, either the county will direct us that we're going to go straight out to Route 13 and connect in there, or we would have to look at making improvements downstream, which would include anything between us and ultimately where it needs to go. But that will be determined. At, at this point, we're, we're looking at preliminary plan. No engineering plans have been drawn up. We've done a lot of studies about what it will take, but the engineering plans themselves have not been drawn. And I think the third point was the schools, and I remember talking about this when we came here for the rezoning last year. Smyrna has not put out an update to their school capacity study, but when we were here in, in November, the study that they did put out for fiscal year 2024 showed that they still had about 1,800 students' worth of capacity. And I, I can't really comment any further on that, because that's the official number the school district's putting out, and we're certainly not going to generate anywhere near that. With 354 townhomes, we'll generate, I think it was 130 or 140 kids. But if you give, I give you my card, you can give me a call, I can run through how those calculations are done, and answer any of the other questions. And if you guys have an upcoming HOA meeting, I can come and talk to everybody. Did I get everything?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the answers. And I know that whole area up there, young lady, is challenged. One of the school members I called up there, because I wanted to find out that particular answer too, was Mr. Chris Skuse. The schools, it's the fire department.
Can I ask what his response was? Mr. Skuse, what his response was to your question about traffic and kids in the schools?
I'm pressing it. Okay. Ma'am, you had your time to speak when we went through it, and I'm, I'm addressing the lady in the audience right now. You wanted to say something else?
Yeah, I would, never mind. I just...
Thank you all. Thank you. Is there anyone else here in opposition to this particular project?
So...
And so you have a question, Mr. Galvry?
I imagine it's for the attorney. I, I just want to...
We're not going to get into the other legal matters. We're staying away from all that, because we can't do anything about that. We're here for planning and zoning.
I'm just making sure that what we are, what we're being asked to vote on is something that we're actually permitted to vote on, because whatever the legal matters are surrounding this situation have been resolved to the satisfaction of our, of our county and to the attorneys that are representing your client. I just want to, I just, I need to hear from you, not from what I heard.
Yeah, because it's already gone through...
If I could, it's already, yeah.
If I could.
Zoning, and all is all done.
If I may, I have reviewed the records, and I, well, the first time that I was here, I hadn't had that opportunity, as you recall. That's right when we switched from Erica to me, and I hadn't had that opportunity. I've spoken with Mr. Penza about the history and the timeline, and had an opportunity to review the orders. There has been a deed, and Mr. Penza can correct me, because he's been dealing with this since 2007, but there was somebody appointed by the Court of Chancery. There was, there's a lot of legal wrangling, which I won't go into. There's been now a deed recorded under appropriate authority, as I understand it, that transferred the deed to, to KAV. So they have, they have the deed, and they're the deed owners now. If someone wanted to challenge that or do whatever, the remedy would be with the courts, but with the history of this, there's been a lot of back and forth. So, Mr. Penza, just briefly, I know you transferred it. Can you just tell who had the authority to transfer and who signed the deed, and explain that very briefly, and then that'll be enough?
Yes. And, and I think, I'll just, before I answer that, backup, which I think will help you. It was in 2000...
Excuse me, sir, did you give his name, so we have, for the record, have his name?
Mr. Robert Penza, who I've known for 20 years.
I just wanted for the, when they write up the minutes.
Yeah, I'm Robert Penza, Wilmington attorney. I was the attorney who filed an action for partition in 2007 in the Court of Chancery that, that, and that case is ultimately resolved in 2023 with the court order, August 24, 2023, signed by Vice Chancellor Glasscock, that resolved all these different legal disputes that Ms. Gibbs has raised. And the, in terms of Mr. Walton's, you know, point, with the Court of Chancery partition action being dismissed, it was dismissed in favor of having a power of attorney that was signed by all four of the owners, which included, includes Ms. Gibbs. I witnessed and notarized her signature on the power of attorney that was signed in June of 2023, and has been recorded for over two years with the Recorder of Deeds that authorized Louis Pritzker to be the agent for all four owners to hire a broker and try and, a commercial broker, and try and sell this property through a private sale to maximize value for all of the heirs, rather than having the court sell this property at a sheriff's sale auction, which wouldn't have benefited the heirs, it wouldn't have benefited Kent County for that matter. So any of these legal disputes, you know, have, Ms. Gibbs has had an opportunity, she knows how to find, find her way, you know, to the courthouse when she wants to, and has, her arguments have been considered, her letters have been considered, and the court has issued its, its orders and rulings. So there is no pending litigation, there is, there is nothing forthcoming, and the, and she's contractually protected, by the way. She's, she will receive 50% of the proceeds. The, the attorney, Gary Dodge, who conducted the, the closing, is now the escrow agent. And so, so any of the proceeds from this developer are going to go to Gary Dodge's office as the escrow agent, and he will disperse it to the parties. So, and she's aware of all these contractual documents. But, you know, I...
No, it's, it's very helpful. It was just, this was a deja vu moment, and, and I just wanted to hear from you for that clarification, and I, I appreciate you giving that to me.
Yeah, yeah, my pleasure. Anyone else?
Thank you for that. Appreciate it very much.
Welcome.
Did Mr. Dodge want to add something to this? I guess, you know, we don't want to stretch it out too much, but we'll do what we can.
Briefly, and my name is Gary Dodge. I am an attorney here in Dover. I do wish to confirm everything that Mr. Penza just shared with you. I too reviewed the power of attorney and would not have closed this if, if I was not satisfied that it was legitimate and it conveyed the authority to Mr. Pritzker. Closing took place in my office. Mr. Pritzker signed on behalf of all four of the, the owners. I believe you have in your papers a copy of the recorded deed. If you see that, you will find that I personally saw the signatures affixed, and I notarized that document as well, and my office was responsible for recording it. So I don't believe there's any irregularity whatsoever in terms of transfer of the title. Knowing a little bit, but not all about this long history, I, I committed my office to serving as an escrow agent going forward, because this matter's not over to date next week, or whenever the, this is going to be a four-year process that I've committed my office to. We will be collecting the funds. We have a 10-page escrow agreement that governs the dealing of those... We have a 10-page escrow agreement that governs the dealing of those, of those funds going forward. And from this point forward, the funds will be administered by my office and be paid to the respective sellers as and when received and per the terms of the escrow agreement. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for me?
Thank you for the explanation. And I don't know if you remember, but we worked with you years ago at Homewood Engineering and Bob Lamore, and we did a lot of stuff with your office.
I hate to admit that I know a lot of you for a lot of years.
And we don't have to go there. I don't know. We don't have to go there.
And I will embarrass Sarah other than to note that when she bought her first home in Dover, that was in my office too, was it not? So it's a pleasure of being in front of all of you again. I know I'll be seeing at least one of you sometime in the not-too-distant future on another matter, but.
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you for the time.
Appreciate it. Anybody else in opposition to this project? We're not, if somebody's already spoke, we're not going to do it, but if you have somebody else?
So, this time, what we'd like to do is try to go back to Mr. Bowman. If you can hear us this time, unmute your line, give us your name and address, and be sworn in by our attorney. Mr. Bowman, are you able to hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Give us your name and address and be sworn by our attorney.
My name's Ron Bowman. My address is 894 Twin Willows Road, Smyrna, Delaware.
Mr. Bowman, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Go forward.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this because traffic right now on Twin Willows is bad enough, and adding to having an exit onto Twin Willows is going to make it a lot worse. I can't tell you the number of times, even with this Twin Willows development here, that people pull out, they don't even stop at the stop sign. And I believe, I'm not positive, that they're probably going to end up having to put a light there on Twin Willows. And there are so many lights now on 13, it's ridiculous. And not only to say that building this, you're going to chase the wildlife that's out of there. There's a family of deer that live in there, so God only knows where they're going to go. They're probably going to get killed by cars. And it's just, the school are, you know, crowded now, and it's just going to make it worse. And I know they're supposed to, I guess, widen Twin Willows. They're going to have to because that road is narrow there after you get down from the engineers for the bridge. But, you know, I'm just, 354 more townhomes is just crazy. And it, you know, and it seems to me, I don't know why, what the purpose was for the county to ask the developer to put more in, that to me would make it worse than, than better.
Is that all, sir?
Yes.
We appreciate your comments. Any commissioners have any questions for this individual? Seeing none, thanks you again for your comments. Any other new speakers that would like to speak?
Sure. If there's anyone else who's joining us online who has not spoken already and would like to make comments either in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no more hands raised online at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we've already addressed it three times, so we'll be taking this project up next week at our business meeting. Thank you all for your comments.
Good to hear from you, Ron.
Mr. Chair, before we go into the next one, I just wanted to disclose that the engineer is Becker Morgan, and I am a client of Becker Morgan's for something in Newark. It's not going to affect my judgment or anything. I just wanted to disclose it so everybody was aware.
Very good. We're very transparent here, so I understand that. Next one on the agenda tonight is number five. It's C-25-01. Applicants are Hartley Delaware Solar CSS LLC, 111 Speeden Street, Framington, Maine, I guess that is, 01707. Owners is TA SCA BA LLC, 1802 Hartley Road, Hartley, Delaware, 19953. Engineer is Becker Morgan Group, care of Andrew Coletti, 100 Discovery Boulevard, Suite 102, Newark, Delaware. Property location is Hartley, Delaware. Present zoning district is AR Agriculture Residential. Relation to the growth zone is outside. Present use is agriculture. Proposed use is same with community solar facility. The levy court district is the sixth, Mr. Paul Hertz. School district is Capitol. Fire district is Hartley Station 51. Area and location, total area is 119.25 plus or minus acres. Project is covering 15.04 acres on the south side of Hartley Road, .81 miles east of Judas Road, east of Hartley. Is there someone here to represent this application? I think we might know this gentleman.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Thank you for your patience tonight.
No problem at all. We'll, we'll, we have a very long presentation planned this evening, so we shouldn't drag out.
We'll be cutting you off anyway.
You still have to state your name, and you still got to be sworn.
We need your name and address.
Mike Ryman, Becker Morgan Group, 309 South Governors Avenue, Dover, Delaware.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. Appreciate the time to present this evening. I am here with Andrew Coletti, our engineer and project manager, Steve McDonough, and Paul Raduka from Ameresco, and also the esteemed John Tracy from Young Conaway. It's my fault. I sent it too late. I'm going to take the blame. I would never, I would never blame the planning department. It's my bad.
To your presentation.
I mean, I can give some overviews while we, while we, while they pull that up. So, as was mentioned, this is a community solar project that's located just outside of Hartley, along Hartley Road. It's a parcel that's about 120 acres outside the growth zone, and the lease area for the project is about 15 acres. The property is currently in agricultural use today and is planned for a community center, community solar generation project. Okay, got it. Got it. Perfect. So, you can see the area there. The kind of dash line outlines the area that would be leased for this project, showing access out to Hartley Road roughly in that location. This is a graphic of the solar array itself within the 15 acres. We do have an access point located here. There are a couple of ditch crossings in that location. Those ditches have been flagged as wetlands. We already have in hand the Army Corps permit for those crossings as well. We are, oh, hold on. So we already have those permits in hand as well, going back here. In addition, the site is surrounded with the required Kent County landscape buffer around the perimeter of the project. We didn't have that perimeter on that side because there's already a well-established forest in that location. It's worth noting that there is no disturbance to the existing forest that is there. I know Denrec had some comments about forest and protecting the forest, and it seemed like they were just kind of copy paste comments because we're not showing any impact to the existing forest for this project. In addition, we do also provide the 100-foot wetland buffer from the wetlands there, which is a requirement of the code and a recommendation from Denrec. On the conditional use standards are well established for these projects. First, that the location is appropriate and not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. That is certainly the case here, as these are permitted uses within these locations. Number two, that the public health and safety will not be adversely impacted. These facilities produce a minimum amount of disturbance to develop. They provide a source of renewable energy. There is soil testing requirements that are in your code that this project must abide by. There is limited impervious coverage. There's no traffic impacts to these projects as they don't generate traffic, obviously no water and sewer impacts. That there must be adequate off-street parking in this particular case. There's no, you know, employees to these, as you know. There's maybe some maintenance visits that are, you know, monthly, so there's no need for off-street parking in this case. And that necessary safeguards protect surrounding property and persons. Mainly when it comes to solar projects, the number one thing is making sure that it's properly fenced, which the electric code and your code both speak to, and this project will comply with. And that there are appropriate screening buffers in place, and your code already well establishes those requirements, and this project will meet all of those requirements. Just a little bit more, as you know, when you adopted the new solar ordinance, it's now been a number of years that established a number of setback requirements, landscape buffer requirements, soils testing requirements, decommissioning plan requirements, and bonding requirements associated with these facilities. This project will meet all of those requirements, and the staff has reviewed that as well as part of their staff report, and has also confirmed that the plans that submitted meet all of those requirements. This just highlights the landscaping there. It is a 25-foot wide landscape buffer outside the fenced perimeter with the staggered trees per the rates required. And then this just gives you a view. We did, the reason we're here is we did submit the notices to the neighbors. We've got, I believe, three objections that are in your packet. One of the objections, the objections is from a direct neighbor that was concerned. One of the concerns was about the view and the screening and what will that look like? And so we did a rendering to show what that would look like from the property. This picture is taken essentially inside our property, about 10 or so feet. We didn't want to go on their property, but it's taken from behind their property, looking towards the solar facility. You can see the landscaping that is shown there that matches the buffer that's on the plan, and you can see how that would screen the facility. So in summary, this facility estate is a community energy generating facility. It's going to serve the area under the regulation of the Public Service Commission. It's compliant with the conditional use standards in Chapter 205 of your code. It will be a local energy producer that supplies power to the public grid. It complies with the conditions of your recent solar ordinance, although it doesn't feel that recent anymore, right? It's probably been around a little bit, I guess 22. And there was a glare study that was also performed and provided that demonstrates there are no glare issues or concerns from this project. One of the objectors raised concerns about the property values in their response. This has been studied numerous times, and I know that numerous studies have been provided to this body over the years that demonstrate that solar facilities do not have a negative impact on property values, and that solar studies referenced here for, for you. And lastly, we did review the staff recommendation report. Staff recommended approval of the project. We've reviewed all of the recommendations. We have no concerns with the recommendations. One of them was about the fencing and ensuring that the fencing was of the kind that allows for migration of animals. That's become quite the standard really in the industry, and this project will comply with those fencing requirements. We have no objection to that. So I believe that is it. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I assume you're going to be planting like pollinators for the grasses?
That is correct, yes. That was actually, thank you, Mr. Jester, because that was one of the concerns from one of the objectors. They talked about pesticides, I believe, and we will be planting pollinators mixes, so there will be no pesticides or anything applied on the project.
And I noticed this is one of the few ones that you have the service road that comes into the banks where you do the storage, but there's no service road around it, but there's still room around the end of the solar panels and the fence to be able to maintain the facility, correct?
That is correct.
So hopefully you won't need any kind of emergency equipment in the back.
Yeah, I mean, you have a, we have a 15-foot wide perimeter around the entire facility, so there could be, you know, vehicles that access if needed.
Okay. I will open you up to Mr. Galvry.
Just a couple of questions. Lighting in terms of the lighting around the facility?
No lighting.
No lighting? Okay, great. The only other one is, I didn't see it in the packet, but is there going to be any water testing in terms of, in terms of runoff from the panels themselves actually impacting the aquifer?
So it'll go through the Kent Conservation District as part of the Erosion Sediment Control and Stormwater Review. There's not a, a water testing requirement in, that I'm aware of, if, maybe I'm not understanding the question right, but there's not a water quality testing requirement from that. There is, however, in your code, a soils testing requirement that happens basically prior to construction and then monitored every five years and provided to the county staff for review.
The reason why I bring this up is there's a growing problem in Delaware with PFOS, particularly actually in the area that I am in right now, but it's, it's a growing problem throughout the state, and it's getting an awful lot of attention from Denrec, and we're working with them actually in my community on, on these issues. So it would seem that it might be a good idea to have the groundwater, the aquifer there tested prior to you putting this up so that you don't get, you don't get blamed for one of the reasons why that aquifer all of a sudden starts to show an elevated level of PFOS. Because there is some, there is some concern about panels and other things being coated in order to keep them clean as basically leaching out PFOS into the soil. So I'm just wondering if, it doesn't seem like we're doing anything about that on a state level yet. I think we're moving towards that, but I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of a precautionary measure, you might want to know what your water has in it before you put all these panels on there and then get blamed for something down the road that you may or may not have created.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question. I think, you know, being here when the solar ordinance was going through back in '22 or whatever year it was, I know that was a big topic of conversation, was about quality of soils and quality of runoff and all those things. And I believe, and Sarah may be correct me if I'm wrong, that one of the reasons for the testing, the soil testing requirement that's in the code that we would have to do, is to do exactly what you're talking about, which is to get an initial baseline testing of what is on the site right now, and then test it every five years to ensure that there are no issues with the types of things you're talking about. And maybe, Sarah, I don't know if you want to.
So you will be doing that?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
I don't know whether the questions should go to you or not, or the ones that are putting up the panels. How many of these have we approved in Kent County and are never getting started? 250-acre farm out in back west of Harrington, that'd been done three or four years ago, and it grew it up in weeds. West, east of Harrington, on Milford Harrington, we approved this size here just a few years ago, and it never touched the property since. Now, I want to know from the people that are putting this up, you know, we're approving these things and nothing's ever happening. There's one out, there's another one out in back of, south of, almost to the Sussex County line, it was in Lego Woods. Never done anything since we approved it. So what's going, I want to know what's going on with the solar companies and electric company that's going to be buying the electric. Somebody's fighting someplace.
Yeah, sure. No, I appreciate the question. I can let these gentlemen answer that more specifically. I've asked some of these questions myself, and, and the common answer that I get back, and maybe they can attest to this, is the process of working with the utility company and the agreements, the interconnection that happens, and the time it takes to get through that process is a major factor in the timeline for these projects.
Yeah. Energy that come from the federal government, they're cutting down on the alternative energy. You know, where are they going with these solar panels? Look what's happening out in the ocean with the wind power. They're about to die.
Yeah, I mean, I can let, I can let Mr. McDonough speak more about kind of the industry side of that.
Yes, Steve McDonough, Ameresco. I'm at North Hampton, Massachusetts.
Sir, can you swear or affirm? Sir, can you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, one of the advantages we have with this project is we got a very low interconnection cost, you know, we've already paid half of it to Delmarva, we have the invoice for the other half, and so we're going through the planning department process to, just to ensure that we lock in all the permits, and then we'll execute on the final 50% payment, and that'll be the last, like, really big hurdle for our project, outside of the permitting.
I don't know, have you come up here before, have you got any other projects in Delaware?
No, this is the first one.
Oh, God bless you, you're in Delaware, you know that?
Yeah, because I checked out four this week, and I've got a report on a couple of them, so, oh yeah. Thank you, sir.
Sure thing.
Anybody else have any questions for him? Nope, seeing none, thank you. And I assume, Ryman, that you ended your report?
Yes, sir.
Nobody else has any questions? Thank you all, appreciate it. Anybody else here in favor of this application would like to speak? Anybody else here in favor? Is there anyone else here that would be in opposition to this application? Anyone here at all in opposition? Third and final call, anyone in opposition, now go to the phones, or to the internet.
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand, or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all, and we'll be taking this project up next week, thank you all for your presentation. Going down to public comment, I only see about one public left here, so I don't know, she's not going to say anything else. Commission comments, anybody got anything for the commission? I do have a few things I want to talk about, the first thing is, and I know, Mr. Davis, we talked about the commission either getting paper or electronic, personally, I'm going to stay with electronic, but I understand through the Levy Court Commissioners, they're giving everybody the opportunity to either have paper or electronic, am I correct, Sarah?
That's correct.
So all we need to do is each one of us, however you want to have your information delivered, to contact them and all, so, but if you have any questions or you want to change anything, please just try to give me a call, let me know what's going on, I know we talked about it, but I, I don't even remember what I had for dinner last night, so you know how that is. So, get on your mic.
Let Kathy know, email Kathy, let her know if you want a printed packet.
Who's that?
Kathy, she's the one who sends all the emails to you.
Kathy Andrews, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you, I'll take care of it for us, see you tomorrow.
The other thing I'd like to ask, sir, once these solar projects are getting built, I went to the one on East Seven Road down there by Viola, and it looks awful, there's weeds up over top the panels, and half the trees, all the plantings are dead, it doesn't even look like anybody's even there, I think some, some of the inspectors ought to be out there looking at it, and also the one over at Magnolia, I went back there, and I actually walked around that one, and it's even worse. This project over in Magnolia, we used that one with the panels, it doesn't even look like there's anything there, I don't even know how sunlight can get down to the panels with as tall as the weeds are, and you can't even see the planted buffer around it, so once we approve these things and all, it looks like there ought to be some kind of a maintenance understanding, aren't they supposed to keep the weeds mowed and all like that?
Well, what you're expressing is a property maintenance complaint, and I will pass that on to my code enforcement officers.
Okay, because they look, you know, it's, it's one of the things that we have passed, and I've been kind of keeping an eye, because I want to hear what they sound like, I'm like Mr. Davis, I want to see how much noise they do make, or the batteries, or whatever is going on, but going to these two, I got so depressed, I just quit.
I, I would offer, Mr. Chairman, if anyone has a property maintenance concern about any piece of property, just to email us, and I'll make sure code enforcement gets out there.
Yeah, because I only did it yesterday, that's why I'm mentioning it tonight.
I would appreciate that.
Any other business before the commission?
I've got a comment.
Mr. Peterman?
I got this from Mr. Jester, you need to contact the right department to get that grass cut, and that's not our department, they, they just made me cut a hay field.
She's the head of all the departments, she is the main lady.
I'm not saying, I'm not disrupting that or disputing that, I'm just saying, you got to call the building inspector.
And I was like Mr. Mills and all, that we keep approving these and approving them, and we never see no results, but there is results out there.
Yeah, there are results, they grow good weeds.
I'm ready to join the meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman? Mr. Servon?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Garvery?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to adjourn. Thank you all for your patience tonight, it was very interesting coming back in September.